Good evening. This is the Menlo Park Planning Commission meeting for July 27, 2020. We are, of course, coming to you via Zoom meeting and the key result of this is that as viewers, your ability to interface with us is dependent on a control panel on the right side of your screen. Many of you will be familiar with this, but certainly some of you would not, and we wanted to make sure everyone is included in the ability to speak during public comment periods, both the general period at the beginning of this meeting and the individual two projects that we're discussing also have public comment periods. I will begin the meeting tonight with a call to order. This is the meeting for July 27 and present tonight with staff. We have Fatim Khan, Matt Pruder, who respectively will respond to the two projects. And of course, our leader Corinne, who has been guiding our meetings for staff for a couple of years now. Among the commissioners, we normally have seven commissioners. If each of you would please look to the control board and click on your video with either an audio present or thumbs up so that I may confirm role. We'll call this meeting in alphabetical order. So Commissioner Barnes. President Barnes, present. And I have cleverly neglected to pull my list of attendees forward, so I may get slightly out of order. Commissioner DeCarty.
Present.
DeCarty is present. Commissioner Doran.
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Tate. Commissioner Tate. Hear you. There you are.
But I'm here.
You're here. And all right, who else is here? Pop up for me. Commissioner Cale.
Present.
And we have one more commissioner. All right, so our seventh commissioner is absent this evening. At this point, I'll look to staff for any reports or announcements regarding tonight's meeting.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Riggs and Commissioners. So tomorrow night, the city council has the CIP plan for 2021 on their agenda, and that meeting starts at 5:00 PM. And then this Thursday at 4:00 PM, there's a commissioner training, and I encourage all of you to attend that. That will be a Zoom meeting, and Judy Heron sent out the link this morning. But feel free to ask us any questions on that, and then that concludes my announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Zandemeyer. At this point, we would take public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where the public may comment on, I'm sorry, Mr. DeCarty, do you have a reporter announcement?
I had a question of Ms. Zandemeyer, if that's okay.
Please.
Ms. Zandemeyer, I had a question about a follow-up email you sent regarding your request. Some commissioners at our, I think it was a planning commission meeting around the opportunity to have an informational or educational item on the agenda about the history of how Menlo Park has developed its general plan and various pieces of the plan so that we could better understand that in preparation for future consideration of amendments or adjustments. I just wanted to follow up on your response. So your response, as I read that to us, was that this is the purview of the city council to determine if and when we would take a look at that, and so therefore, it's not our opportunity to do so. Do I have that correct?
Um, yes. So the city council will at some point be initiating the, I think, for the housing commission, or I'm sorry, the housing element is the one we were talking about. So at one point, they would be initiating that process. And then as part of that process, the planning commission and other commissions would provide feedback, but it wouldn't happen before the process is initiated by city council.
And so, just so I can understand, that means that the planning commission, if we were determined that we were interested in having a session earlier or on an aspect of the topic at our own choosing, we don't have discretion to be able to set our own agenda in that space?
Well, um, I mean, so the the planning commission is a little different from the other commissions that have a work plan in that the planning commission, you know, reviews the development projects and makes final decisions on a lot of them, and then makes recommendations on other ones that go to the city council. So it is a little different without a work plan, and I guess if there is something the commission is interested in, it would come through the chair, and we would need kind of more understanding of how it ties in with what the commission is tasked with. And I think maybe the training on Thursday will kind of explain a little more how, you know, the commission's role and how that relates to the city council.
Sorry to press this point, but I'm confused. So then we frequently have items on our agenda that are not specific to development projects that are before us. We had an excellent informational item on ADUs, and that was absent on that particular agenda, anything that we were considering around ADUs. That would be one example that's been recent. So it appears to me that we have a history of being able to do that in some instances, but then in this one, it looks like we can't.
Yeah, so I think the ADU, that session, that's a good example. That was something that was, I think it was scheduled for the city council just a couple of weeks after the planning commission study session, so it was something that was happening right away. But, you know, I'm open, and the rest of planning staff is open to hear more about what you're interested in and how it ties into the commission's role.
All right, so I'll reiterate what I said the last time on this, and if this is through the chair, that I strongly believe we should have an informational session where we understand the history of how Menlo Park got its zoning ordinances and its general plan in place. It is a long history. It is one that is deeply connected to covenants in neighborhoods that did not allow people to sell their property to people of color. It's around redlining, and I think it's absolutely germane to every decision that we pay attention to as the planning commission. And I don't think taking a look at this simply in conjunction with an aspect that we will be considering nearby is the right way to do that. I think we should take a step back and have the opportunity to explore and understand as a planning commission, to be able to hear from people who have a stake in these decisions, developers or residents. And I think that should be independent of a compressed timeline around when we're considering specific development projects. So I find it completely germane. In fact, it is the reason we are here as a planning commission and would strongly encourage us to agendize an opportunity to be able to dive deeper. I'd be happy to follow up. I completely understand if I'm the only commissioner that thinks this is important, and therefore, we do not put this on our agenda. But I believe this should be in the purview of us as a planning commission to be able to look at this. So thank you for consideration. And Corinne, I really do appreciate you taking a look at this and getting back to us. I just, I just, I think disagree with, with what we heard back.
I thank you, Mr. DeCarty. I think this might be appropriate for possibly yourself, Mr. DeCarty, and me discussing with staff some what the priorities are for agendizing on the planning commission, what our role is as opposed to the city council, for example. I think one of the items of follow-up would be to confirm what neighborhoods still have active blue laws or other compromising elements from our past. This is something that I see interest from our panel. I, we are limited as to how much we can discuss a subject tonight that itself is not agendized. However, the agenda process typically includes the chair and staff. It would be appropriate, again, for the chair to take input besides Mr. DeCarty's, perhaps through staff, and then schedule this discussion. I would like to move forward at this time unless there are comments on another subject at this point regarding reports and announcements. Oh, and Ms. Kennedy, I would like to acknowledge the arrival of Camille Kennedy, our seventh commissioner.
Yes, I've actually been on and off. I just keep getting bumped off. If I may, Chairman Riggs, I do think that I am in complete and total agreement with Commissioner DeCarty, and I think this is germane to all of the planning commission, and I would be very, very, I would find it very suspect if we did not, in fact, meet as an entire planning commission to discuss this. I would also find it very surprising if that in every, in all the covenants and deed restrictions in this community, particularly across the 101, if any of the written-in redlining and the laws that were, that prohibited the sale of property from one race to another had ever been dissolved. My assumption is that, like in most communities, people just stopped listening or stopped paying attention to those particular clauses. And, you know, I think if we looked back, it would, we would be very surprised that all of those laws are still on the books. So I think with respect to Commissioner DeCarty and respect to our community at large, I think this is a really important conversation to have for all of us in the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Doran.
Yeah, I would just like to quickly add my voice in support. I think it is very appropriate for this commission. And I would also like to make the observation that this commission doesn't have a written set of bylaws, which many cities do have for their commissions. So we have a little guidance on what is appropriate for the commission, but we do have the provisions of state law that provide that in addition to our quasi-judicial powers, that we also are here to advise the city council on planning matters, and I think this is very appropriate to that mission. This is not the time for it, but I would like to just plant the idea that it would be a good idea if we did have a set of bylaws that provided these things in more precise detail than we have now.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Tate, do you also have a comment?
And so my comment is along the same lines. Initially, when Commissioner DeCarty brought the subject up, I definitely support it, and I definitely do believe that this is something that should come before us so that it's a learning exercise for us, and I can't imagine that council or staff would not allow that to happen, or at least I hope that it does move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. I think Ms. Zandemeyer already has the hint that we would like to move in that direction, and we will follow up with a discussion perhaps tomorrow. All right. Moving on to public comment. Public comment at this point is where the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda, and items listed under the consent calendar are commented on here as well. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction, such as Menlo Park or county or neighborhood. The commission cannot act on items that are not listed on the agenda, as you've just heard me mention, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information and, of course, to listen. Before I actually call for public comment or invite and start listening to any that might be present, first, the method that one uses in order to make a comment is to click the raised hand that is on the dashboard on the right of your screen. I'm going to I'm going to ask our staff member Leo Tapia to better explain the technicality of our interface.
Thank you, Chair Riggs, for that. Yeah, so as Chair Riggs mentioned, for those who are attending the meeting virtually, and do you have a comment or question at this time, there is a green hand icon on the right side of your screen. If you go ahead and click on that, that will notify a member of staff that you have a comment or question that you would like to share, and then we will then activate your microphone for you to share said comment. Alternatively, there is a question field in your control panel. If you open that up, you can type in your question, and a member of staff can then read your question aloud.
And although I may not know where to look at this point, I do not see any hands raised. Do you, at your end, Mr. Tapia?
At this time, I am showing no hands or questions. Chair Riggs.
All right, thank you. I think we on the DS have probably taken up that category. So moving, moving on, closing public comment and moving on to our next item, which is the consent calendar. We have in front of us the approval of the minutes from July 13, 2020, planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or a desire to make comments or corrections? Now, don't be shy. We do need someone on the commission. Thank you, Mr. Doran. Is that a motion to approve?
I would like to move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. So we have a motion and a second. Would you please indicate your approval by turning on your screen and indicating thumbs up or speaking approve? I believe we can do this. Mr. Tapia, can we do seven screens at one time? What is our limit?
Chair Riggs, our limit is six screens at one time.
All right, then. We are back to alphabetical, and Mr. Barnes is right there. I get approval from Mr. Barnes. Mr. DeCarty.
I'll abstain. I was absent.
Thank you. And Mr. Doran? We have an approval. Ms. Kennedy. We can't hear you, but is that a thumbs up? Oh, abstain, of course. Thank you. And pardon my use of the alphabet, Mr. Cale.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. And Ms. Tate? Up. And Chair Riggs is in favor, so the motion passes 502, reflecting the two abstentions by Commissioners DeCarty and Kennedy. At this point, we believe, again, our public hearing portion, we have two items before us. The first item is 1600 Bay Laurel Drive. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and basement on a substandard lot with regard to lot width in the R1S Single Family Suburban Residential Zoning District. The project also includes a request for a use permit for excavation into the required rear setback for the basement light wells. So Ms. Khan, I believe this is your project. Do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. As an update, I would like to note that one of the commissioners have pointed out that the streetscape for 1600 Bay Laurel did not appear to accurately draw the windows. The applicant and the homeowners were immediately notified, and they were, and they made the necessary changes prior to tonight's attendance. An email was also sent out to all the commissioners with the revisions, as shown on the screen.
All right, thank you. Is that the only revision tonight?
That is the only revision. However, additionally, I would like to note that an email of support was received by staff after the publication of the staff report. I'll go ahead and proceed to read out a letter with permission from the chair.
Please.
Dear Planning Commission, my name is Martha Hutchison, and I live at 315 Olive Street, which is next door to the Giaffrey family, who is planning to build a new home at 1600 Bay Laurel. I'm writing to express my full support for this new build. I have viewed the plans and personally discussed the project with them. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me at given telephone number. Thank you, Martha Hutchison. And that concludes staff's update on the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Khan. Let me open this up to Commissioners for any questions regarding the project. Initially, after which I will ask the applicant to present. Are there any initial questions? All right, seeing none. If the applicants would click on and make any comment they might desire regarding their project.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, and I believe, I don't know if Amy, you're going to join as well, but I guess I'll just start. So first, thanks very much to the commission and to the staff for taking the time to meet with us tonight. We especially wanted to thank Fatim for all the work she's put in and for guiding us through the process. I'm Sina, and this is my wife, Jen, and we're the homeowners on the project. Also on the call is Amy Azren, who is the project manager, and she's available to answer any questions. So Jen and I, along with our three kids, actually currently live at the existing house at 1600 Bay Laurel. We've been in this house for about 10 years. We really love the neighborhood and our neighbors, and we're very much invested in the neighborhood. And throughout the process, we've really tried to design a house that respects our neighbors and enhances the neighborhood. And I think maybe you've seen from the letters, where we've reviewed the plan with our neighbors, and everyone has been very supportive. So that the house we're, do I have control of this? No. Do I have control of the?
Somebody's. Yes.
Sorry, how do I page up? Sorry about this.
The right-hand bar, you might try not entirely right to the icons, but the one with the gray, just one left of that.
Yeah, my mouse keeps keeping.
Try using the down arrow. Sometimes that may work, or use the right bar. That might work as well.
Okay. No, you know what? I don't recommend mouses. Sorry about this. Well, you know what? I'm going to go ahead and wing it without it, but.
I can maneuver, I mean, I can maneuver for you. There, I can see your mouse moving. Try it.
There you go.
Got it?
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I just wanted to start with this. I mean, so the house we're proposing is, it's a transitional-style house. It's a style that we feel fits in well with the neighborhood and the existing homes. The simple gable styles, and we feel fits in with the design of a lot of the original ranch houses that are in the neighborhood still. At the same time, there's a lot of new building going on, and this is a house that we think also fits in well with some of the newer houses that are, that are being built around us. The house itself is built up of these three distinct gable forms, which are generally separated into different functional areas. So this main area that's facing Bay Laurel is sort of the living, dining, communal area. Around the corner on Olive Street is the garage, and then if you're looking at the house from Bay Laurel, on the left is a two-story bedroom area. And our lot is a, it's a corner lot, and it's sort of wedge-shaped, and so the idea is that we've kind of, let me just skip back, is that we've sort of arranged the three structures in a way that we think works well with the lot. The different gable forms are generally oriented in an L shape with each one perpendicular to each other, and they're arranged kind of along the shape of the lot with a bedroom wing sort of bumped out toward Bay Laurel a little bit as the lot widens. And I guess one thing I should just mention is the house in the corner, we really wanted to create welcoming facades and entrances on both Bay Laurel and Olive Street, and the main entrance is on Bay Laurel, which is where it is in our existing house, but we've also added an informal mudroom entry on Olive Street next to the garage. In terms of the general design for the exterior and the building massing, a couple of things that we really like are the variations of the heights. So I go back actually to that other image. So the variations of the heights of the building, as well as the different depths, and also the juxtaposition of the different, the roof angles. So you see the gable end next to an even at all the angles that you're looking at, which is something that we really like and we think adds a lot of architectural interest. As far as exterior finishes go, we're proposing a sort of a warm palette of stucco and cedar. It's a clean, contemporary look that we think complements both the surrounding homes, as well as the feels pretty natural against the backdrop that, you don't see it in this image, but there are a lot of trees behind the house and between the houses, and we think that those, the colors sort of fit well, and we don't have a photorealistic image, but I did want to sort of share an image of a, of an inspiration. So these are sort of the colors and and themes that we're looking for here. So there's a light-colored stucco cedar siding with dark brown accents with the gutters and the fascia and the, and the window cladding. So just really quickly, so design, talking about the design of the house, within the house, it's all centered around that central area, the central sort of main living area, which has good access to all the different yards, front yard, backyard, and both side yards. The bedroom area, like we said, is two-story. It has two bedrooms downstairs, two bedrooms upstairs, with the master bedroom downstairs, and that's sort of designed for kind of an aging-in-place situation. And the house does have a basement, which right now, we're intending to leave mostly unfinished as sort of workshop creative space. But we did design it to be ADU-ready, by adding light wells, as well as a separate entrance from the outside. And I guess just really quickly, going back to the two-story section, I think one thing that I just wanted to point out was we really tried to minimize its prominence. The square footage is not huge compared to the overall footprint of the house. It's about 18 and 19% of the total floor area. And we've tried to distance it. What I'm discussing, let me just go back to that image. Oops. So tried to distance it from the corner of Bay Laurel and Olive to keep the feeling from the street the same it is now of the one-story home. But especially what we try to do is really try to minimize the effect of the neighbors next door to us at 1610 Bay Laurel. And one way we've done that is try to minimize the number of windows on that side of the house. Both the upstairs bedrooms have their closets on the neighboring that 1610 Bay Laurel, so there are no windows out of the bedrooms. And the house itself is about 20 feet away from that lot line, so about 30 feet away from the neighboring house. And that, the entire backdrop there actually is a lot of evergreen trees. And so there's not really a lot of visibility anyhow, but I guess even if the trees weren't there, we're hoping to kind of still minimize any privacy concerns. And I guess just one other thing to mention, I think you probably see there's a large bank of windows in the stairwell there. And again, what we've tried to do there is we designed the stairs so that the landing is pretty far away from the windows. It's about 12 feet from the windows. So in total, over 40 feet away from the neighboring property. And so there's not really a lot of visibility, effectively, really no visibility into the neighboring home or their yard from that stairway. And I guess, just in summary, we tried to design a house that fits in well with the neighborhood. And I guess from a design standpoint, and sort of stand the test of time, but from an aesthetic standpoint as well as functional. And happy to answer any questions that you have or address any concerns.
Thank you very much. To our Commissioners, does anyone have any question at this point? Prior to my going to public comment, questions regarding the presentation or the project? Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, thanks for updating the streetscape. Is that accurate now? I'm looking at, say, nine-foot-tall windows on the house aligning with a little bit higher than seven-foot windows next door.
So, yeah. So I did go out and measure as best as I could without sort of being too trespassy. It's, I'd say it's pretty accurate without kind of doing a laser measurement or getting an actual survey. The windows actually in these ranch houses, the trim is actually really wide. And so that's part of what sort of, in the original rendering, actually had the windows a lot higher. But also the scale was a little bit off, I think, just because of the way that the 3D model was sort of pasted onto the 2D. But, yeah, I mean, so I did verify all of that today and measured both our house as well as the neighbors as best as I could to try to make sure that was as accurate as possible.
Okay, thank you. I just, because of the heights that are involved, I just wanted to see how close that could be, how accurate that could be. And I believe the bone structure, this is a prefabricated structure? Is that correct?
So I can speak to that. It's the structure, it's technically prefabricated in the sense that the materials are produced beforehand, but it's, the home is fully custom. So we provide a full thermal envelope for the home, so it's actually going to be a net-zero energy-ready home. And all of those materials are 3D modeled and fabricated and then delivered onsite.
Okay. I'm asking just because of the heights involved. So I think the one-story section has a 12-foot wall height and it vaults up to as high as somewhere between 14 and 15 feet, if you're not counting the drop ceiling area. So is that, is that? So these aren't prefabricated heights. This is, these are custom heights that are adjustable.
Right, so the design is custom and we made sure with all of the ceiling heights that everywhere was within the, you know, everything was compliant with the design guidelines and the bylaws. And so we made sure that we were within the square footage and any areas over 12 feet high were double-counted in the GFA calculation. And we tried to limit those areas just to more of like the common areas and areas that would have a little bit more impact by having that double-height space.
But it is, it is not, it is a custom height, is that correct?
Correct, that's, that was more of a design decision, not a function of the structure.
Okay. Regarding the materials, are there two finishes on the cedar? Looks like one was maybe a gray and one was stained? Or did they match?
I mean, I can probably address that. So the initial idea was actually that the cedar on the two-bedroom section as well as the cedar on the garage would match as a kind of a natural sort of clear stain cedar. And then with a slightly darker cedar on the kitchen bump out. The rendering is not sort of color correct, I would say, in terms of the exact colors.
Okay, I just saw that there was an M1 and an M3, so I just want to know if there's major difference between the two, other than the orientation?
No, so there is some difference. I would say it's intended to be very subtle. Again, one is more of a clear, like sort of a clear stain, a natural. And then the other one would be a slightly darker stain. Again, just to sort of provide a little interest and show that bump out a little bit more.
Okay, and one other minor material thing. If I'm looking at the Olive Street side, in the last elevation, looks like there's a small section of wall that has some vertical siding, but other drawings don't have that. So I wasn't sure if that was part of the project or not.
On which, on the garage?
No, on the corner nearest the intersection. On sheet A 2.01, it's the bottom drawing.
Yeah, I believe, did you have a question? Did you ask Fatine about that area?
I didn't, no.
Okay, I'm just pulling up that page just to make sure, but I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that is the same question about, is it on the far left of the, kind of closest to Bay Laurel?
Maybe I'm not in the right corner, but it's the corner of the one-story section.
Right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So.
So go ahead, Amy.
Okay, and that vertical siding that you're seeing is actually just that kitchen, it's that bumped out part of.
Got it.
On the front facade, yeah, it's just the side. It looks a little bit flat in elevation.
Okay. And then last thing about the windows, are these wood windows with a metal cladding?
Yes.
Okay, and there's an item in the staff report about the assembly of them and the grids. There, I guess we wanted more information on the grids and it's a, it's a, something we've seen a lot where they're the fake grids and you can, they're not inside and outside. Do you have any information on the assembly of these, the windows and the grids?
So, I mean, we haven't picked the exact windows yet, but we've done plenty of window shopping to just sort of understand the difference. And I guess I could pull up a picture, but I mean, it's so, I mean, I guess like one of the brands we've looked at is Colby, which has sort of like true divided, where it's actually like different panes of glass and wood between them versus simulated. But it's still grids on both sides with a spacer in the middle.
Okay.
Which I think what we understand is like the best as far as both efficiency as well as sort of, you know, if you're not in a historical district that actually requires sort of individual panes, that the kind of spacer in the middle with the dividers on each side is the best alternative.
That's great. So I think that's what the Planning Commission typically likes to see. If they're not true-divided lights, then it's the grid on the outside and the inside with a spacer bar in between.
Right.
Oh, great, okay. And then last thing is really minor, on that same elevation, there's two windows, one at the bedroom two and one in bedroom three. And I just noticed one casement's opening one way and one, the other casement's opening the other way. Just my suggestion would be that they match and they both open the same way, but it's a minor point.
That, that's a good point. I hadn't caught that. That's probably, I mean, that's what we would have wanted to do anyhow. But yeah, thank you. We will use that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cale. Do any other Commissioners with questions at this point prior to public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Similar to the beginning of this meeting, if you are watching via GoToWebinar and would like to comment on the project and take this opportunity to speak, there is a green hand that you can click upon that will invite the organizer tonight, Mr. Tapia, to connect you and speak. You can also enter your comment in the text box. Mr. Tapia, have I covered it?
Yes, Chair Barnes, you covered it really well. And at this time, I'm not seeing any comments or questions, but we can give it a second if you would like.
Yeah, let's just give it a few seconds for someone to move their mouse over and see how this works. All right, seeing no hands raised, we'll close the public comment period and move on to Commission member discussion. Would have any discussion, motions, et cetera, regarding 1600 Bay Laurel? Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I'd just like to express my view that I think the project is eminently supportable. I think it's sympathetic to the architecture of the neighborhood. I particularly like the layout. I think it makes good use of the shape of the lot that's a little bit odd and is sympathetic to the neighbors on both streets while also creating some privacy for the owners inside the corner, which is kind of hard to do sometimes on a corner lot. I'd also like to observe, as Commissioner DeCarty's fond of pointing out, that apparently the only reason this is before us for consideration is that the lot's deficient in one dimension by 1.6 feet. And if it were five and a half or so bigger on that dimension, this would be approved without us having to consider it. So I'm prepared to support the application as it stands.
All right, thank you. Is that a motion?
I'd like to give the other Commissioners an opportunity to weigh in before making any motions.
All right. Ms. Kennedy? I'm sorry, we can't hear you yet.
I deeply appreciate the quality of the proposed project. This is in my neck of the woods. I bike past that house almost every day on our way to, well, when the kids used to go to school, back in the good old days. And so there are very few remaining original structures in that neighborhood. And I think this one does really nicely for containing what has been a rapidly evolving or devolving framework in that neighborhood. So I would actually, when I clicked my camera, I was going to second Commissioner Doran's first. But I guess he has now removed that and I would propose that we approve this project.
All right, we have a motion on the table, thank you. That doesn't prevent us from continuing with comments. Mr. Barnes?
Good evening. I know the applicant's Mrs. Jeffrey personally. That doesn't influence my decision on this project. What I really like about this project is, first of all, is that it is off-site construction, that it is, it has elements of prefabrication. And I think that creates a lot of opportunities to get the kind of project that clearly they're looking for. If I look at the materials, if I look at the siding on the lot, looking at the style, I think they've done a wonderful job at keeping what is an open-floor plan well within the parameters of a lot. I mean, I'm looking at a 27% building coverage. So I think it created a lot of living space without taking, would be moderate in terms of how they designed this project. And I think they took into account its proximity to its neighbors on the two-story side, and I appreciate that as well. What we're being asked to do tonight is to look at two things. One is the use permit for the residents and the other is the use permit for the encroachment in the rear setback light well. So I'll approach both of them. So again, on the use permit for the house, I'm in support of that and in a moment I will second that and also want to bundle that as well and give consideration to the proposed light wells, which would encroach approximately two feet, one inch in the 20-foot setback with the outer edge of the light wells located approximately 27 feet, 10 inches from the nearest resident. So for both reasons, both in the scale of them and the distance from the neighbors, I don't have any problem with that encroachment into the rear setback. And with that, on both of those counts, I will second the motion to approve the project per the staff report and the attachment A in this evening's staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. We have a motion in the second. We are still open for any Commissioner comments if there are others that wish to comment. Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I agree, it's a very handsome house. The massing is very well put together. The one thing that just, I worry about is the overall height. I think the, even though it's a one-story and a two-story, I think these, it's a little deceptive on how tall this thing is really going to be with 15-foot-high measurements to the underside of the structure. I think it works. My only input would be that the garage itself is really tall. It's like 17 feet or so tall. That could easily lose a foot. I don't know if there's going to be much support for that, but the house overall is very handsome. I would just suggest to the makers of the motion to drop the garage height a bit to make that blend in with the adjacent house next door. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. Ms. Kennedy, do you have any comment to make regarding this suggestion?
Not entirely, I mean, I don't think it's an overreaching request of Commissioner Cale, so I would entertain amending my motion at all. I'd be happy to amend the motion to include shortening the height of the garage.
All right, Ms. Kennedy is open to the idea. Mr. Barnes, as a second, are you open to that idea?
So, let me understand a little bit more about that. If I'm looking at the, let's go to page in my, I'm on D19. And I'm looking at the perspective that is both perspective one or perspective two. So if you, if you're lowering the garage height but keeping the same angle, you're going to impact the dwelling structure that it connects into. So I don't know how that acts independently and doesn't trigger, unless you reduce a slope, anything to the. unless you reduce the slope, the, anything to the surrounding buildings. So first, let me just understand how that would, from a happen.
Mr. Kale.
Thank you. Though I'm looking at D17, two sheets up. And the way I read it is the garage roof is independent of the the one-story roof. It looks like there's a flat roof over the mudroom area. Perhaps the applicant can weigh in on that. And just for purposes of the motion, my suggestion would be to lower it one foot.
Would that be to lower the eaves as well? In other words, the entire roof as an assembly would drop one foot as your suggestion?
The entire roof as one, as an assembly, yes.
All right, let's hear from Ms. Taseron.
Thank you. So just to speak a little bit more to the design intention of that, the idea was using the gabled roof. So even at the max height, you're minimizing the appearance of the mass with the sloping and, and slimmer eaves. And the garage volume and the common area volumes have roof lines that are kind of mirroring each other. So the, the peak of the roofs are at the same height and the eaves are at the same height as well. And then there's that breezeway connecting them with a, a lower roof. So if we were to lower the garage height, then you would be eliminating that kind of symmetry that we feel like gives, gives a nice balance. And there might be some structural or construction complication with having the eave so close to the breezeway roof. You know, if it's a kind of a mandatory request, I'm sure we would be able to find a way to make it work, but just wanted to give a little bit more kind of context to that, that side of the house. I don't know if Sina has anything to add to that.
Mr. Jafari. Do we have your audio?
Sorry about that. I lost my audio for a second. Yeah, no, I guess my only comment is to echo what Amy had said. We really tried. There was, there was a significant design consideration to, to matching up the, the eve end with the bottom, the, the eve end of the, the main sort of living structure with the bottom of the, with the eve end of the, of the garage. And I think, I guess that's, that, that was a significant sort of design element that we really liked, was having them at the exact same height and having their roofs at the exact same height. And we did, we did already lower the, the sort of mudroom height for constructability. And so I guess we prefer not to. And I think there were some, some significant design reasons why we did it the way we did. But again, that's, I'll just share my, my reasoning why we, why we designed it the way we did.
Thank you. I'll take my moment to comment then. First, in general, I have to agree with virtually all the points that the first three commissioners made on this project. It's a sympathetic design. It's a quality design. It's always nice, from my point of view as an architect, to see a successful, I hope, use of prefab materials. And thank you, Mr. Barnes, for mentioning the encroachment, which I think in this case is not in the least bit threatening to the neighbors for, for the excavation. And I think even Mr. Kale notes that this is a handsome design. I think even if I felt that I might have made the garage shorter or in some way broken its massing, I would very much hesitate to suggest to the architect that a change be made on what I see as a very well-integrated design. And I would not be able to support any motion that pressed the applicant to alter what is certainly successful overall design, including the massing. Personally, I'd love to have a garage with 17 feet inside. And apparently the applicants are feel enough about that to dance along the penalty of the double-story space that we have in Menlo Park. So I have to say I support the project as it is. And Mr. Barnes, I believe you support the project as it's been presented. So I'll circle back to the maker, Ms. Kennedy. You had noted you were open to a change. Are you also open to leaving your motion as it originally stood?
I absolutely am. And I will tell you why, because I feel like this is an incredibly arbitrary process. And I, I completely agree with you, Mr. Riggs, Chair Riggs. And I would never have actually, I would have, I would have removed the amendment to begin with because I want to show just how much this process really relies on some pretty particular independent preferences around things. And to the Jafaris, your project is gorgeous. I can't wait to watch it built. My kids are going to stop by there every morning before school, if they ever get to go to school again, and watch it going up. So I go back to my original, my original motion, the project as is. And there you go.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Are there any last minute comments from commissioners? All right, seeing none. We will again go through the exercise of voting. Mr. Barnes, I see you are ready.
I am ready. And I do want to say before I vote that I do respect Commissioner Kale's input on this. We, in Menlo Park, the planning commission has a dual role as both design review and planning issues in some jurisdictions. Those are separated, like in, for instance, Palo Alto. They have the review and then they have the planning. So it is in some respects arbitrary, and that's part of how we're set up. But with that said, in respecting Commissioner Kale's input, I still don't, with all due respect, I don't see eye to eye on that in a 17-foot-high garage. And then it's, it's, it's matching with the eve. So for that reason, I'm not amenable to that condition or that, that change. And with that said, I'm voting yes.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Vote yes. Commissioner Kennedy. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Doran. Again, I, I'm struggling with the alphabet today. It's a good good thing I don't have math as well. Yes, from Mr. Doran. And Mr. Kale. I'm going to try to work a little bit better with the alphabet.
I'm going to vote yes. I'm just going to add that thanks to Commissioner Barnes for his comments, you know, we do have this role as for design review. And so to the best of my ability, I'm going to push to have the best designs we can get for Menlo Park. I'll note that the garage slab is also a foot above the grade too. So I hope this turns out great. I think it's going to be a beautiful house. I just wonder about how it's going to feel in relation to the neighborhood when it's done. But it's a beautiful house and I, I support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now Commissioner Kennedy. A thumbs up. And that brings us to Commissioner Tate. We have an affirmative. And my vote is absolutely affirmative. So we have a 7-0 unanimous approval. Congratulations on your project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item F2 in public hearing, our second of two applications. And this is 847 Woodland Avenue. Mr. Cruder, any update or comments on the project?
Good evening, Chair Riggs. And planning commissioners, thank you very much. I would like to share one update, if possible, on the screen, if staff could assist with that. We received a, an update for one item on the plan set, on the proposed site plan on sheet A-1A. There's one edit that was made, and I'm highlighting it here with my mouse. There was an erroneous call out for the rear right side, right corner of the proposed residence. And it's been revised to measure at five feet, six inches. This is not the shortest distance, but it was called out earlier. We wanted to make that clarification. That is all for announcements to this project. At this time, I'm also available for any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any questions from this initial point project? All right, seeing none. I'll invite the applicant to tell us something about the project.
Good evening. My name is Levett Niyazi. I am the owner, along with my wife, of 847 Woodland Avenue. She wanted to be on the call tonight, but we have a very young son. And she's tied up with him right now. A little bit about the project. We've gone through multiple different designs. As it stands, we're looking for a very traditional home with divided windows, like was discussed before, stucco exterior. We feel that it blends quite nicely with the neighborhood. And as far as I'm aware, it, it follows all the guidelines. We've gone through multiple, multiple iterations with Matthew and others, Chris, on the design. And I'm not exactly 100% sure what additional details you guys are looking for exactly. But my architect is online and he can, he can speak as well.
Hello, my name is Roman. I'm the architect. I've been helping Mr. Levant and his wife this past, I believe, about nine months with her project, went through, like you mentioned, quite a few iterations, trying to find the, the right aesthetic for the street as well as their household. As you said, they do have a, you know, children and they probably, like most couples, want to have more down the road. They, they do understand that in Menlo Park, in that neighborhood, we, we try to limit the volume of the built of new structures. And, and in, and the one, one of the main components that has that, that, that is not linked directly to, to its aesthetic is to go with the basement configuration, which, which is not necessarily the best way to do it, but it's a great compromise that a lot of households have to do in, in order to be able to live in Menlo Park and yet achieve a little bit more square footage than one could get in those places. And, and, and so we, we talked about it. We talked with staff about it quite a few times. We went through a lot of iteration. And, and I think what we developed is, is at the same time, the house, the, which is big enough for the family they want to have in the future, at the same time respectful enough of the neighborhood and its current configuration of mostly one-story, one-and-a-half-story houses. And I would say from the exterior, one would not know that the basement is the conditioned space. So, so I think regardless of, of, of who would like the style of the house itself, I think we, we can all agree that this was achieved through, you know, design and, and setback of the second story. From the outside, it would look like a regular, not so big contemporary slash classic California house for that neighborhood. And, and without being that 3,000 square feet big thing that is slapped sometimes in some other neighborhood that, that looks twice or three times bigger than anything around. So that's what we tried to do. Or I think we got there. Staff was pretty helpful, giving good recommendation with the proportions of the windows, aligning windows, maybe moving things a little bit. We didn't have to do too much changes with staff as before we even got to staff. We did a few iterations, you know, trying to see what was possible. And, and I think at this point, we, we, we've, and I hope the, the panel agrees that we, we found the right balance for what they want to achieve and, and what the city has right now. And, and I think we've worked on a, on a quite a few compromise to try to get there. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the project, technical or specific or, or how we got there or, or why such and such configuration for the house. Other than, than that, I think the owners are pretty satisfied. Staff, through their report, demonstrated that we comply with all zoning requirements. And we did an extensive documentation, including a tree report and, and back and forth, you know, on this very difficult site, you know, its shape is, is pretty odd. And, and we still managed to, to get this through without asking a variance. So, so we know we comply with code and, and I, and I hope the panel agrees and supports the project, which would be a great addition to, to, I think, the neighborhood. I would let you ask me any question if you want to.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roman. Any questions regarding the presentation to either the applicant or his architect? Mr. Kale.
Thank you. I do have a couple of quick questions. It, it looks like the, the garage slab is a foot higher than the rounding grade. Is there a reason for that? Is it in the flood zone or something?
No, I think it's an artifact of how we document things. As, as we're only a few inches higher. Let me, I'm actually going through the set right now to actually precisely answer that question. The, the finished floor of the house is a little bit higher. Let me get to the site plan. No, the, the garage is not one, well, maybe I remember wrong, but it's not exactly one foot. Let's say the garage slopes towards the house from the street. And depending on how you measure it, it could seem, at least on the drawings, like about a foot, but really it's probably more like nine inches, basically a slight slope to the street. And then if we had a small couple of inches curve right at the garage, which we typically do, but it's hard to represent at those scales, everything happening, that reduces the driveway height by about another couple or three inches. So we're just about around six inch, maybe seven. And, and honestly, when they regret those things, when they actually build it, you know, they, they might get rid of one inch. You know, it's hard, as hard as we want to document things. Let's say the intent is not to be a foot higher. The intent is to just slope from the streets in order to have a good drainage. And that slope, the, the driveway slope would be about six inch from the curb to the garage plus a couple of inches, two, three inches curb at the driveway itself, I mean, at the garage slab itself. Pretty much the standard garage, nothing that we want to make different.
Well, I'm, I'm looking on sheet A5 on the bottom elevation, the left side elevation. And there's a note that says the average natural grade is 47.8 feet. And the finished floor is 49.06. Is the finished floor with this, is that for the garage or for the house?
Oh, no, that's for the house.
Not for the garage?
No, no, the garage is going to be a little bit less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You, just looking at the material. So I see there are fiberglass windows. Has there been any discussion of perhaps upgrading those to wood windows?
It's a conversation we could have. If I, can I speak or was it a question to me or no?
Please.
I don't want to interrupt, but I guess it's a conversation we could have with staff at some point. I'd like to point out that the, the wood windows can be extremely nice. Quality good windows, which is what we would hope when we say let's put wood, wood, wood windows. You know, it really means, you know, try to put some mahogany windows, but they, they could double or triple the price of the windows. And for a product like this could cost another $100,000 very easily. And that, and I've seen this happen before, where the fiberglass options, the fiberglass were not just an upgrade from vinyl. That was true five or 10 years ago. Fiberglass are extremely nice windows. And with a couple, you know, main brands, they have different class of those. And I think this can satisfy the modern look as much as mahogany without really imposing a huge cost to a homeowner for the pleasure of the aesthetic. You know, I, I agree, it'd be nice if you
You know, I, I agree, it'd be nice if we could do it. Every architect is happy to put on this portfolio houses full of mahogany windows. Down the road, I, I know what they cost and I think it's nice to put a very expensive vinyl window, which I think is what the owners want to do. And, and with this, you get more flexibility. It, it doesn't change color with the years, there's less maintenance. And, you know, moving forward the next forty years as this house has a modern look of today, I think it will work just fine. I, I would, I would not, you know, necessarily support, well, although I don't, I cannot really support, not support. But I have had the case in El Cerrito. And eventually it was a condition of approval that we changed the window to wood in mahogany. And then we were able to get back to vinyl once we, we kind of showed the, 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 the samples and the quality of the windows and, and how the mahogany upgrade, again, it's very nice, but it's not just the finish. It's a, you know, we're, we're talking a hundred thousand to a hundred fifty thousand extra cost to get mahogany windows.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roman. You, you made a couple of references to vinyl in, in your last couple of minutes.
I meant fiberglass. I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. I meant, yeah, I did meant fiberglass and it is spec fiberglass, not vinyl. Yeah, definitely.
Mr. K.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting mahogany. I'm a little surprised that the cost difference from a high end fiberglass window to a moderate wood window of a hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'll just leave it as a suggestion to upgrade to wood windows because I think the neighborhood can support that. Let me ask you a related question. What is the material around the windows? What is the trim?
Let me get back to it.
I don't see any note.
The trims would be wooden. Most likely cedar or prefinished pine, depending on the exposure to the elements. Where we'd want to put cedar because it lasts longer on, on, on the side that's the most exposed. And on the regular side, not, not really exposed, a, a prime pine of the good quality pine from a, you know, from, 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 from a good meal works just fine. Yeah.
So it's a painted wood trim?
Yes, yes, definitely. Yeah. I mean, I, I've tried in the past on natural wood windows and the truth is they look fantastic for the flippers when they flip them. And then you drive by three years after, we do get pretty harsh sun and, and the coat of epoxy that they have to put on those things is already chipping. And then in order to get them back, it's extremely difficult. And, and then down the road they get painted. I mean, you know, ten, twenty years from now, eventually they get painted because nobody can really just, you know, brush all that epoxy off of it. And even for the lesser quality windows, I found that, that the finish, once they've got, I would just say a maintenance, basically repainted, you never get back to what you had with the vinyl. It's a sharp look, even if it's fence, it fence pretty consistently because it doesn't chip. And as long as you get a nice color scheme, that, that really works well. But a little bit darker than you would think for the trims as they fend away through the years, it's still, you know, keeps a very nice finish. I mean, that's personal opinion. Yeah.
Okay.
Again, fiberglass, I'm sorry.
Thinking about materials also, I see a lot of stucco and no contrasting material. Did you have any discussions about using an accent material, wood or stone or something to break up the map?
And, and actually I also do a lot of work in Berkeley, not that I can transpose. But what happens with this one is because the way the city has it, which is the second story needs, essentially with the, the volume that we can achieve, needs to be, the second story needs to be recessed from the first story. And just this breaks the massing significantly enough. And then if you look at our elevations, the main ones, it would be, you go back to A five. It is A five elevation, A six, I'm, I'm sorry, elevation one on A six. We got five different roof lines. The house, of course, on a drawing always looks flat where really we have one, two, three, four, five different planes. And just that, to my opinion, really breaks it. And, and I don't really see the need for such a small frontage window for breaking of the massing with different material. I think it might overdo it. I've seen it done down the street really well with houses that were actually oriented the other way around, where the long side of the house is facing the street. Here we have the narrow side of the house facing the street. In that regards, I think a nice stucco, my preference goes with a stucco with a lot of elastomere or like a very smooth finish. With the, the, with the tinted texture would look just fantastic. And then again, it's narrow enough with those five different plans and five different roof lines that there is quite a bit going on without being too much. But there's quite a bit going on to not give it a stucco massing that, you know, you could find from a two story building. And again, this really has to do because the main view of the house is the narrowest part of the house. And if you look at the house, that elevation on one on A, A six, I'm sorry, not A five. If we did a quick ratio just on the flat view itself of the roof plus the windows, plus the doors versus with, versus with the stucco, the elevation has about fifty five percent stucco and forty five percent something else already. Again, I, I, I would tend to agree with you in putting maybe some cedar planks on the side and, and I, and I've done it on the project. If we had the long side of the house like a rancher facing the street, that really calls for it. Here, I, you know, I don't think they're going for that look, to, to be honest. And, and I think they will have enough non-stucco finishes on the front elevation. Again, about just, you know, just by looking at it, you know, about forty five percent of it is not stucco. So I, I don't see the need to, to add much. I think it'd be really nice to be clean and slick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next question is regarding the garage. It is fairly prominent. It's in front of the rest of the house and it's fairly tall. What is, what is driving the height of that garage at sixteen three?
The, so the sixteen three is not, it's the, it's not where we want to be. That's, that, that's where it goes because we want, if you notice that, that, that we have a consistent plate height throughout the house, which brings some sort of a structure to, to the house. Usually what people do, well, the way things are framed, if you frame your house and your garage with two by eights, you ultimately get your garage below your house and that roof will be lower here. We wanted to like make everything the, the same height. So we have the gutters are all at the same height and the plate height of the first floor is the same, it's consistent. And I just give it a nice look and that bumps up that little volume. You know, that garage is so small in front of the house. We wanted to make it slightly bigger, give it a little bit more depth and be able to put a small window on top of it. Even though it's going to be a thick window, I mean, event, the type of thing is just give it, give us, given us some room to do something with it. If it's a bit smaller, you can't do much, it's just your typical little garage. You make it slightly bigger, you can dress it up nicely. You can add that fixture, that rounded window that balances the rest of the house.
So you say the garage is rather small. I, I think in general, in Menlo Park, we prefer to de-emphasize the garage and not make it a, a design feature. The height is a question for me. And then related to that, what, can you describe what that little louvered thing is on the gable end? Is that a painted wood louver or is that metal louver? What is that?
Well, that would be wood, I would say.
Okay.
I, yeah, I would say wood, yeah.
Painted wood, okay. And my last question is about the entry, the little roof there. To me, it, it, it seems a little bit like an afterthought. And I was wondering if you could kind of be, kind of walk us through how you came up with this entry roof and make it a feature or not a feature.
Sure, well, the, the, there is different way to look at it. We can look at it at a, it, it's a, it's a process of compromise. And, and, and every time you bring something to, to, to a third party or a new person, everybody is going to eventually see and look at one of the compromise and, and say, oh, couldn't this one be bigger? Of course it could be bigger and I agree, it should be bigger. Is it functional for this house to make it bigger? Not necessarily. So it's a small house. It's a very, it's a smaller frontage for house. We need to have a room next to the door. Otherwise it's basically just the garage and, and, and a front door, which I thought would be completely unacceptable. So the compromise is because the garage needs to be those dimensions and we can't really make it less wide. Then we're left with what we have because that's the reality of the site. I mean, that's what it is. We're not going to make it bigger. So in order to get a window next to the door, we have to shrink the, the square footage we give to, to the door. And at the same time, we, we, we try to make it work with what's behind it. So it feels normal, not just, just like we slap on some makeup on a cow. And in that regard, that's the size of the door. And it might seem like it's a bit small. I, I agree. It could be bigger for such a big house. But if it was bigger, it would be out of proportion for particularly this front edge of a house that we have. And then once we've done this, it's tempting to say, let's make it bigger, let's make it higher. But then if we can't really make it work, it really looks like a gimmick. And then there's one thing that, that at the end of the day, doesn't feel right is when you do a gimmick on something. I mean, there's things you can push a little bit to make work better in terms of aesthetic, align things and, and, and change your proportion, but just making an element bigger because we think it should be bigger. I don't think it's necessary. A way to emphasize the, the size of the door is by landscaping and landscaping properly the right side of the house when you're looking at it from the streets to, you know, if you block up the garage and you look at the door and the three windows next to it, the doors about a third of what's left over. If we ignore the garage, which is popping out a little bit, we, there's a point where we come to, to the house where the proportion now works. And again, it's a, it, as we all can read plans, we, we all know and understand that, that the picture is flat when we look at it. But as we're all on average between five and six foot tall, our eyes are around five foot four, you know, minds are, yeah, I mean, a bit short between five foot four and five, and five foot eight. And we're always mobile, we're always in movement when we look at those things. And what we miss in those documents is how you, how you see the, that, that house in perspective. How's your walking towards it, how's your driving? And, and, and we, and, yeah, so, yeah, on, on the picture itself, it could feel like it's a little bit, it could be bigger. The truth is, I think it's going to work really well. We're going to put a nice door that, you know, what in balance is, is going to be the side, the size of the hallway behind it. It's going to look big without taking too much space. And, and it's going to be, they, they, they wanted to make it bigger. We, we just, there, there's a point where there's a lot of things that we need to compromise on it. And, you know, it's a collection of compromises. So this one was one of them, but I think we, we're not far off to, to what would be a good balance. And, and, and I would go against trying to raise it like we do on Mediterranean or Spanish colonial looking house where you bump up. You know, developers do this a lot, you know, they make those cheap houses that are thirty five hundred square feet. And then they just make a grandiose entrance because somewhat it's appealing, but, but when we look at it, it always look, it's too big. Like it would deserve to have a six thousand square foot house. Here it's not that big, but at the same time, with the width of the door, the way we perceive things, it's going to be a big door. And it's going to feel much bigger than what it looks like, especially once you walk past the garage or as you're getting close to, to the house, you're going to have this five foot door which opens on almost thirty six inches, like recall or thirty two with a side light on the side. That is actually a pretty big door. It feels big. And then, and I think it, I think it's going to work. I mean, any design can have improvements. And then, but I see your point, yeah, we, would it struggle? Would it struggle to, to, to find a proportion that we think was right and really having those big windows on the right of it and being able to have a full room on the sides? I think was more important than, than, than trying to say that the door, that the entrance could, could be bigger.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Any, any follow up on that, Mr. K?
Uh, no, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will take a moment myself to follow up. On sheet A six, I'm trying to, and this is particularly important since although most of us on the commission are used to reading plans, the public isn't necessarily so. When I look at the planes on the front elevation, I have the garage plane, just a couple of feet set forward from the main house plane. The doorway, however, is recessed. Can you just clarify? There is wall area above the door, which is presumably recessed.
There's a wall area past the door, you mean?
Above, above the door. There is, you know, maybe fifteen square feet of stucco above the door. And that is in the plane of the door, it appears, because there's a line on the right that would indicate the separation of planes between the front room and the entry door.
Yes, I see what you're saying and I agree with the way you're saying it. Yes, yes, yes.
All right, so that plane goes all the way back to the plane of the door. But the room on the right and the second floor are set forward by a few feet. Is that correct?
Let me get back to this.
Because the door is recessed in the common.
Yes, let me. Yes, yes, but the, but because we, yes, that, that is right. And, and both statements are true at the same time because of the ceiling height that we have on the first door, which is ten foot six. So we, we have that ten foot six and that allows you to actually do that. And then if you look at sheet A four C.
Right.
You, on the roof line, you see that the roof that we see in the elevation on A six is actually sticking out a little bit. So we're going to have that roof keep on climbing where it's supposed to be and finish properly. That, that makes sense. I didn't explain that, that really well. But essentially both things you're saying are true. But the piece of roof that is sticking out will be on, will be on the face of the house, which is aligned with the wall that is the closest to the street.
Right, I understand that. And I see the purpose. It's plain behind, that is the plane that is, contains the door and its side light. That plane appears to go up all the way within maybe four inches of the twelve point seven six finished floor.
It's actually meant to stop at the door or a foot above the door. We're missing a line, there should be a line of foot above the door. Yeah, that would make sense, yes. Yeah, the, the drafter missed it and I missed it when I looked at the plan. I think you're the first one who caught it. Yes, because otherwise structurally it doesn't work because we have a foot of framing for the, for the second story. So the roof would still be where, where it's at because it's a front, but eventually the ceiling would stop. And I would say just about a foot above the door would be enough. Because then that will end up below the gutters and, and there would be no confusion with those lines.
All right, that makes, that makes more sense. And I think also it will be, it will make a more compatible or more harmonious entry. Even just from a two dimensional point of view. And I do have a question for you, Mr. Roman. This is a mixture of hip roofs and gable roof. I have to say I rather like the side elevations on sheet A five. Particularly like the left side elevation because it forms some integrity between the two floors, which I realize is not normally what, what is suggested as you develop a project, but that's my personal opinion. The front facade, however, you chose a hip roof facing forward. And of course that hip roof by necessity of the, of the shapes below is not a simple hip. It has a peak on it to the left.
Exactly.
Was there any consideration to simplifying that roof or even to have a gable at the second floor that would present the front with maybe a little bit of coordination between the garage roof and the upper roof?
And, and to answer this, I, I would ask you to go to A four C where we have the proposed roof plan. And then, and we did try a gable at first in the front, but then the truth is it doesn't tie in really well with the second story on the right. And, and it just didn't tie, you can see the, the geometry of it because the, the ridge is in the middle of the back of the house and not in the middle of the front of the house because we got a big one and it made much more sense to have it there in the back. I'm talking about the second story. When we designed the roof and the roof, how much we want them to look like something. When we designed the roof and the roof, how much we want them to look like something? They are pure forty five degree projection geometry regardless of the angle of the roof. And and you can't make them up. You just design, you just, they come, they come up by themselves. You know, you pick if you want a gable or or not, and then you have to design it. And that's pretty much where it goes naturally. If we forced a gable, then the left, the right side of the roof would actually tie in. But I don't think it would look that right. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Oh, yes, I do. Uh, I I I that was a very memorable presentation by the builder who worked uh, on the west side, who explained to me.
Okay.
This has to be, oof, I put it into the CAD system, and this is what came out. So I know it.
Yeah, no, 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 and and but I mean that thi- this is the reason why we didn't put a gable there.
Yes, no, I understand. And I was curious, um, and at uh, at this point, um, I'll uh, I'll move on so that uh, other commissioners can ask questions if there are any as well. Do I have any other questions regarding the project? All right, seeing none, uh, let's move ahead to public comment. And the way that as a viewer of this meeting, um, via the GoToWebinar, uh, if you would like to make a comment, you can click on the green hand that is there on the interface on the right. Uh, you can also type in to the chat box a question and staff will read it. Um, presuming they get the system piping in the next minute or so. Um, and uh, let me turn this over to Sir Tapia to um, clarify anything I may have missed.
Thank you, Chair Riggs. I think you clarified it pretty well and explained it really well. At this moment, I am not seeing any comments or questions from any members of the public.
All right, I don't see any. And so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for uh, comments. Mr. DeCarty.
I actually do have one question for staff through the chair, if I could.
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Pruder, could you address the the concern raised by the one um, letter that we received in the packet? Uh, a neighbor that was concerned about um, building a basement in a zone vapors uh, and the issue of liquefaction and an earthquake, just to clarify.
I'm sorry, was it a question to me?
No, this is a question to staff. I'm sorry. That would be to Mr. Matt Pruder.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCarty. Uh, yes, to clarify the two items in that comment letter that you speak of in the staff report, there were uh, items concerning building a basement um, in what was presumed to be the flood zone. This project and this site are not located in the flood zone, and therefore basements can be built. And they are subject to the building code requirements, uh, which are, you know, endemic to the city. And the other item regarding liquefaction impacts uh, is an item that we spoke specifically with the building official. And we were clarified on the matter. And uh, in short, the uh, main important detail here with liquefaction is that it is mainly a concern from a building standpoint uh, within properties that are within flood zone. And so, again, this project and property are not located in the flood zone. And so the liquefaction impacts are not significantly any different than elsewhere in the city. It's really a matter for flood zone properties, and it does not affect this particular property in a unique way. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Pruder, I have a follow up question on that, which has to do with de-watering. Typically, a project that starts in September or October isn't much at risk. Uh, but through uh, easily through April, um, deep excavations almost inevitably find water. Uh, Palo Alto has had a significant problem with de-watering of large basements. Do we have, um, I don't know if you were able to speak with our building official regarding this, or perhaps you know. Do we have uh, any guidance for contractors regarding de-watering?
As far as I know, Chair Riggs, thank you for your question. It is an item that relates to the building code, and we have best management practices. Um, I don't know of something specific that's unique, uh, that would be unique for this particular site. I believe any project involving a basement and residential development, such as this project, would be subject to the same uh, de-watering expectations and requirements for the building code. But I'm happy to follow up with that further if you would like more information on that. Thank you.
I would, I think it might uh, at least inform us perhaps at the next meeting. Uh, or or by email, as you choose. Thank you, Mr. Pruder.
Thank you.
Um, additional comments from commissioners? Or questions regarding the project? Mr. K?
Thank you. So we had public comment already, haven't we?
Yes, and there were no, no comments.
Okay, um, so I'll just weigh in. I think unfortunately, this project misses the mark. Um, I appreciate that. Um, they've gone through uh, many iterations, but I'm, you know, I'm looking at the final project, what we're what we're seeing here. And I also appreciate how the second floor does step in on the sides and uh, avoid sort of looming over the uh, the adjacent one story houses. Um, but to me, you know, it's a very large house. It's a, it's got a basement, many bedrooms and bathrooms. Uh, but there's, to get to that point, I think there was maybe many, too many compromises made as as the architect expressed. Um, I think the materials, just an all stucco house with fiberglass windows, uh, again, misses the mark. The garage is very prominent and very tall. And, you know, as I, as I looked at the project, I wondered, you know, where does this, where does this fall? Is it something that is close to approvable? And I think what lost it on me is the entry. It just seemed like it was um, just thrown together and it doesn't really do anything for the house. So it's just a missed opportunity here. Um, I also don't, not a big fan of the two story wall um, with the living room or the front room is uh, has a bedroom directly above it. So um, I I'm not going to be able to support this project.
Any additional comments? All right, I would like to respond. Uh, Mr. K is always insightful uh, regarding the designs that come forward to us. And I have to agree with Mr. Barnes uh, and Mr. K that it is part of our purview to assess the design quality of projects uh, that kept forward. In order that there be uh, a level of uh, quality uh, and a level of consistency with the existing neighborhood that we are in essence appointed, at least in part, we are appointed to make those calls. It has been noted that we are not there to make the call for conforming projects. That is a an equity issue in current speak uh, that I do need and do feel needs to be resolved. And I've made suggestions to resolve it for nineteen years without success yet. But it is our job to make the comments. On the other hand, uh, there are uh, some elements that can be viewed in different ways. For example, I'm a lot more comfortable with fiberglass windows uh, at this point. Um, having uh, had had projects with them uh, across the last five years. And I think the profile is uh, fully acceptable. Uh, and it is very much like the cladding that we have to have on the exterior of wood windows uh, just in order to make them handle the heat. And on one or two sides of the building, the uh, dew and dry cycle, which rots wood very aggressively. The uh, uh, limit to a single material I I grant typically is um, is helped by the introduction of a second material, especially on a massive house. On the other hand, some designs uh, refer to certain elements of uh, material and style. And the closest reference point to this project is, I think, mission style, which would clearly be stucco only. Uh, and the style was not shy about providing large expanses, although uh, having windows, faux windows and tile insets did relieve that uh, shape from time to time. Overall, there was uh, one, one surface. Uh, the fact that this is smooth stucco is reassuring to me. It uh, will lend it a twenty first century element. And and there are other benefits that I think make it more appropriate uh, in Menlo Park. And so while uh, I do agree that the little entry roof is somewhat challenging, I can't find that as quite enough reason to uh, hold back the project. Uh, if I thought there were already uh, an available improvement to that entry, uh, I would want to suggest it. However, uh, I don't see that. This is a width restricted um, design. And uh, and then finally, although personally, I'm not terribly in favor of the hip roof second floor, I also feel that there are limits to how much I personally am willing to reach in order to uh, help someone else with their design. And so I find this project to be to be acceptable as presented. I don't, particularly in the light that I don't see a lot of flexibility uh, from the architects regarding the roof and the front entry. Not not for lack of, uh, that was not a personal or professional comment, just that his observations seem quite valid about the restrictions that he has. So I would be willing to support this project. I, as chair, prefer to uh, seek a motion from uh, one of the commissioners. And uh, I see Mr. DeCarty uh, first.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Chair Riggs. Uh, I'd like to echo my thanks for Commissioner Kail for um, thoughtfully asking these questions about the design and also for Chair Riggs. Um, and would uh, also completely lend my support for the points I made tonight about our dual role here as a planning commission. I think that's important. Um, in this particular project, I I won't go into details for myself. Um, I, there are aspects of the project that personally are not how I would um, have designed the project. And I think some of those have been addressed. Um, I tend to uh, personally be on the side of Chair Riggs and this. For me, at these moments as a commissioner, what is important for me is to know what the immediate neighbors um, believe about the project and the property. And my understanding from the staff report is that there has been outreach to the um, immediate adjacent neighbors. My understanding, I I guess, is reported by the applicant, is that there are no objections. Um, we've had this conversation before as well. I would prefer, if we had, as we did with the previous project this evening, a more extensive effort to get written um, correspondence from neighbors. Um, I think that it's exactly in these moments where we have design considerations that can fall in the eye of the beholder and are trying to balance these multiple interests where this comes into play. Uh, but for these reasons, tonight, um, I would uh, support this project as submitted and um, would be fine um, making that motion.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarty, for making a motion. Um, Mr. Doran.
Yeah, I'd just like to observe that these things are always compromised. And the compromises have to be resolved in a way that works for the property owner and the person that's willing to finance uh, the construction. And, you know, this project did that. I think it's an improvement over what's there now. And I think the neighbors will be glad to see the upgrade of the property. Um, so I think we we need to keep in mind what's achievable here. Uh, and this is manifestly achievable. It is an improvement over what's there now, in my view. And uh, I'm prepared to support, and I would like to uh, second the motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Barnes, any comment?
Sure. So regarding this project, uh, a key hurdle that I have in going into the use permit process is, you know, is it deleterious to the to the area? Because that's, that is the 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 functional definition of a use permit. And if I look at the the left side elevation, uh, I think it's reserved on the second floor. Uh, and if you note the house that's to the uh, the single store, the house is to the left, um, I don't think it creates privacy issues for that. That I'm, the materials are 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 fine. The materials cross the hurdle. The siding crosses the hurdle. The the, you know, the mastings is in on top. So I don't have enough to to that would preclude me for voting for it. And and in those moments, uh, if I don't have the, um, not see any reason to go against, obviously, I'm going to vote the option. My proclivity is to go for. So in this case, I'll support this project. You know, uh, what you do with your basement is up to you. There are bedrooms down there in a rumpus room. Uh, but it's with within development standards that you can do what you want to do there. There's a lot of bedrooms in this house. But again, that's as a private owner, that's your, that's your decision. So, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Riggs, we've got a first and a second. Is that correct? I don't need that. We've got a functioning, functioning second. Okay, so those are my comments, and I'm happy to participate in the vote. And if y'all just stay on, if you're going to call for a vote, or you can look for any other comments.
Are there any other comments? All right, we will go ahead and vote, uh, starting with Mr. Barnes. Have an affirmative?
That's correct.
And Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
Affirmative. Ms. Doran?
I'm a yes.
And Mr. K?
I'm a no.
And Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Tate? And that's an affirmation. And in voting, I will note, uh, which hasn't been said today, that this is a lot of house for a fifty four hundred square foot lot. I live on, I think, a fifty three hundred square foot lot. But that is not the guideline. Um, I think uh, Mr. Barnes uh, reviewed the guidelines well. Uh, I will add my vote in uh, in affirmation. So the project passes. Uh, the vote is six to one with Mr. K against. Congratulations on your project.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We'll move on to item H, information items. So Ms. Sandomire, uh, I see that uh, we might have some good news for commission uh, coming up in August. I see that we might have some good news for commission coming up in August.
Um, yes, so the next meeting has been canceled. We didn't have any projects that are ready. So that would have been the August tenth meeting. The next meeting that will will occur will be the August twenty fourth meeting. And that's all I have for informational items, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandomeyer. Do we have any questions from the commission members? All right, seeing no questions. I am pleased to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for your help on my first effort back in a decade and until August.
Thank you.
Chair Barnes, thank you staff for all your efforts. Be well, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.